And five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the Tuesday, March 29th, 2022, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be taken by a roll call vote. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the free republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Thank you. There's some correspondence, Nicole?
Yep, the following correspondence was recorded. An email from Ms. Deborah Diana dated March 16th, 2022 regarding the activation of the 5G network, and an email from Ms. Katie Burke dated March 20th, 2022 regarding school procedures when a positive COVID case is identified.
Thank you, Nicole. There's a motion for minutes?
A move that the school committee approved the minutes for the March 15th, 2022 school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, this motion requires a roll call vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you. Now, visitor comments. Do any visitors who would like to make any comments? You can raise your hand or just turn your video on and let us know. Okay, it doesn't look like there's any visitor comments. Okay, is there any school committee announcements or recognitions?
Bronwyn?
Yes.
It's Gianna.
Okay, great, go ahead.
I'm just gonna pull up my... Take off my glasses, pull up my Facebook. So it's actually an announcement from the Long Meadow Public Schools on their Facebook page, and I just happened to see it, and I just thought it was the cutest thing ever. So I'm just gonna read it because I think it's important. Children in kindergarten through second grade are invited to read along and craft with Long Meadow High School Little Readers Club. I just love that name, by the way. The Little Readers Program is hosted by Long Meadow High School students, awesome, who have a passion for reading and wish to share their enthusiasm with youth in the community. Little Readers Club members will read various books and do hands-on crafts with a little reading buddies, also super cute. The Little Readers Club wants a chance to give back to the community in a fun and beneficial way. Registration is required, and the program will be held in the Philip Michael Laurel Discovery Room or on the front lawn of store's library, weather permitting. And then there's a link, but I think if you're not on Facebook, you can go to longmeadowlibrary.org or you could possibly reach out to the high school. Longmeadowlibrary.org looks to be the place. So, just super cute, awesome job, and I just wanted to thank Long Meadow High School, the students, and anybody else in the library, of course, for making the Little Readers Club possible. And I hope that it's for kids, for students, K to second graders, so I hope that families and students participate. Thanks, Bronwyn.
That's great, Gianna, thank you for sharing that. Are there any other announcements or recognitions?
Mary?
I just wanted to congratulate the senior class for their production of Shrek, which was a wonderful community event. I know a lot of families who were able to attend. All different grade levels enjoyed it, all the way up through senior year. So it was a very fun event for all. So thank you to the class and to all of the student participants and faculty.
Great, thank you, Mary. Any other announcements or recognitions?
I would just say thank you to all of the elementary school students, staff, and families for coming out last week for the parent caregiver conferences.
Great, thank you, Nicole. Okay, this time it looks like we'll move on to business with guests. We have a Wolf Swamp Road School presentation. Mr. Jared Materas, the principal of Wolf Swamp Road School, has wanted to show us a video depicting the alignment of the SEL guiding principles and the vision of the graduate. You can take it from here, Mr. Materas.
All right. Actually, I'll jump in if I can and thank Jared for pulling together an engaging video. And with Jared tonight is Assistant Principal Kristen Heath. And Jared and Kristen are new members of our administrative team and have done a wonderful job for us at Wolf Swamp. And this is a continuation in our series of reports that the administrators have provide... Provided the community focused on illustrating the ways that we are living the VOG. So turn it over to Mr. Materas and Ms. Heath.
Thank you, Dr. Rocher. Thank you, members of the committee, for letting us join you tonight and share some information about Wolf Swamp with you. You know, in thinking about how to showcase a little bit about Wolf Swamp and how it ties to the VOG, Ms. Heath and I myself really sat down and started to look at our CARES, our guiding principles of our SEL, and really landed on that being a centerpiece to how it really ties to the vision of the graduate. So without further ado, Mr. or Dr. Rocher, if you can start that video, that'd be great.
All right, and for our members at home, if it's not audible or visible to you, let me know, but I'm going to share my screen now to get us going.
The CARES Kids model started here at Wolf Swamp in the summer of 2019. CARES Kids is a program that's based off of PBIS. It includes student engagement for expected learning behaviors.
CARES stands for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. We started this program to build school community, to build on rewarding positive behaviors within our school, and to allow students of all different ability levels to become peer role models.
The way that the program works at our school is that teachers and staff from around the building hand out tickets throughout the school day, in the generalized classrooms, in specials, lunch, recess. Students are given tickets when they are showing cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, or self-control. Students place their tickets in their grade level boxes, which are located at the front office. Every Friday, we pull a ticket from each grade level. Students are called down to the office and are given a prize and a certificate.
At the end of every month, all of the tickets that the students have earned go into a bin, and we pull out one of those tickets. That class will win a class reward at the end of the month.
We feel that this school has really benefited from this CARES model and has become a fabric of the school culture. CARES Kids sets students up for future success.
I basically do it every day with my friends. We help each other with projects and we help each other with getting stuff done and stuff like that.
Try to be kind and caring, and if someone has another idea, actually think of it, just not say, "Okay, cool, we're not doing that, let's just put that outside, put that inside of the box." You shouldn't really do that because you shouldn't have, like, an open mindset of everybody's mind.
I had to, like, almost, like, interview somebody about their life in third grade, like, to make a biography about them, and they did the same to me, and it was really fun because we were working together and it was great.
I eat candy with my friends.
Well, it's sort of like when, like, say someone's getting bullied, you stick up for them and, like, maybe go tell a teacher about what that kid's doing or something.
And why do you think it's important to them?
So you can help other people and pick up for what's right.
If someone's, like, picking on someone else, they can assert them or be assertive to tell them, like, "You shouldn't be doing that," or something like that, and try and just, like, be a better person.
Sometimes people get bullied, and I would never, I do not want to get bullied, so I would definitely want to stand up for those people.
So there's, like, this chart we do, it's a job system, and one of the hardest jobs I've had is porters, because a porter, you need to, like, bring the lunchbox and, like, be available, so...
That sounds like a big responsibility.
Yeah, it is, you gotta bring everybody's lunch, so...
Um, it means that, like, if you are giving your responsibility, you have to, like, be able to, like, like, do it, and, like, if you're, instead of, like, if people are doing the wrong thing, you have to know that, like, you should do the right thing, or maybe try and help them do the right thing.
So what's one of the things you're responsible for in terms of school?
Like, you have to try to do a phone book and bring it back to school, you have to do your homework, you have to, like, listen to teachers, you have to follow instructions.
I remember one time I felt sad because my dog died, and I helped her feel bad.
Technically, it's every time someone's hurt or something, but I especially like helping out with my brother and littler kids who don't know how to take care of themselves. You don't know what to do if they get a bloody knee or something.
It helps you learn because if you're being loud and crazy and you can't control yourself, you're not gonna learn anything.
If you really, like, are, sometimes it's, like, something's really, really hard for you, um, you can't just, like, go, like, you can't just, like, cry or anything, just say, I, just raise your hand and say, "I need help."
Thank you so much, Mr. Materas. Any, any, any closing comments at all, anything you'd like, anything additionally you'd like to share?
No, I think, I think that was really great, our kids had a lot of fun. A lot of them wanted to be a part of that, so it was tough trying to weave out certain students and try to make sure we kept it to a reasonable time, but they had a lot of fun doing it. We had a lot of fun filming and putting it together. I'm sorry for the quality, I'm not sure if that was on your end, if you were getting the same feedback as we were, but I'm happy to send that to the school committee as well and so you have a little bit better, cleaner version.
Okay. We didn't realize any feedback was coming through, but sorry about that, we'll be sure to share it out.
No, it's not your fault, just, it's probably just from doing it from Google Drive or something like that, no big deal.
Questions for our Wolf Swamp leaders?
I can't see everyone, so if anyone has questions, they're...
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, I just wanted to say thank you again. Each week, these little snippets from the different schools are really just the highlight of our meetings, and it's wonderful to see the kids engaged and enjoying their time at school, and lovely to see a little bit of an inside view of what, what's going on over at Wolf Swamp. So thank you so much for, for putting that together, and thank you to all the teachers and students who participated for making it happen and sharing it with us.
You're welcome, thank you very much for having us, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else?
I'll, I'll just add my, my appreciation to the Wolf Swamp staff for pulling it together under Jared and Kristen's leadership, and always impressive to me how young people nowadays are able to reflect on their own learning and growth and development, that's something that I'm not sure I was doing when I was their age, so very, very impressive to see them be so reflective.
The great part, too, is we had kids K through five there, too, on the long metal facets, so it was really nice, especially our kindergartner that likes to share candy with her little friend operating.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzie.
Thank you very much, and that would be great if you could send us a copy of the video. We did have some background noise at home, so, and maybe we can post that somewhere for the viewers at home that may have heard that as well. Thank you.
Bronwyn?
Yes?
I, I think I saw Suzie's hand, and then I also had my hand.
Okay, Suzie is, no?
I just gave, I just gave a clap. I was, I was diddling Nicole's comments, thank you so much.
Okay, Gianna, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Bronwyn, and definitely what Nicole and Suzie's clapping shared in appreciation and just celebration of what y'all did. But I just, so I'm a school counselor in Springfield Elementary School, pre-K to five, and we were just having this conversation this morning about, you know, how we have the portrait of the graduate and how are we gonna celebrate, you know, more of our Tier One kids, we're spending a lot of time with our Tier Two and our Tier Three. So I'm stealing the, the names in a bucket, and I'm also stealing the, the video model, so I'm gonna steal it from superintendent so that I can share it with my school, so I just wanted to say also not only thank you for the great work, but thank you for being a model for others of us who aren't in the district, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gianna, good point. Okay, if there's anyone else, we move on to administrative reports versus the superintendent.
Thank you, I'm actually gonna cede my time tonight, if I could, to Sue Bertrand, Sue has been very active organizing a lot of work associated with our district improvement plan, so I appreciate her pulling together a report for you tonight. I just mentioned that, you know, we are in a great stretch of the school year right now with conferences underway and, and MCAS testing being planned or implemented by our administrators and lots of different field trip requests and end-of-year activities being planned as well, so it's a, it's a busy, great time and, and, you know, the, the warm weather is injecting a lot of great energy and life into our schools as well, so... But could I cede my time to Sue, who provided a, a written report to you in your packet?
Okay, Bronwyn?
Yes, we're ready, thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. Hi, everybody, good evening. Yeah, it's been a busy stretch, we've had several five-day weeks of school, which is... Everyone's tired. But we've had a chance to pull together a lot of committees and a lot of meetings and we're, we're, like, moving on some really nice educational stuff instead of constantly thinking about COVID, so that's been really great. Continuation of our MTSS alignment, we met this past week, I guess, a week ago, about continuing to align the MTSS referral process, aligning referral requirements across elementary schools, being sure that we're using common screening tools and that the structure of the meetings is the same at all the schools, that the same outcomes are likely at all three schools, depending on student need, so we'll continue that work, we did that for ELA, and we'll, we'll move into math and social-emotional as well. And then admins have a big week this week, I think all of us, including our APs, have some PD tomorrow morning, and then on learning walks, we're going to be introduced to a tool to, for our learning walk look-for's, we're going to practice our learning walks on Thursday and Friday in the morning, actually, we have PD all day Thursday and Friday, our groups of us do, but we're split up, so some have it Thursday, some have it Friday, but we'll let you know how that goes. And I just want to, a big shout out to teachers who have graciously agreed to have us come through their classrooms because the groups are gonna be probably four or five in size, and some teachers are having us walk through twice, but they've been great and we thank them for that for sure. Some fun stuff regarding new curriculum, STEAM at middle school in grade six, seven, and eight. The current teacher at Glenbrook, who is taking over STEAM, is looking forward to a colleague joining her at Williams, so the posting is up, and I know the principal's getting ready to interview and wanting to hire as soon as possible so that those two teachers can work together across district on STEAM curriculum. They are, well, at least Emery will go to visit a couple of different districts who already have a STEAM program up and running at middle school, Westfield is one of them, and Agawam is another. There's a STEM consortium that I'm hoping she'll be able to join and hit a few meetings up before, so that's, that's up and running, and I'm trying to save budget for STEAM-type activities and supplies and materials, so that's some really fun work as well. Just this afternoon, we grappled again with the elementary report card vision of the graduate competencies and how to reflect those on their elementary report card that makes the most sense for kids in pre-K through fifth grade. Marty joined us for a little while and added his two cents, and so we had to start over again. But it, it, it's really important work, and the teachers are just taking it so seriously, and so that continues. This past year, we had a middle school scheduling group made up of teachers, and they met several times during the year, they did a few surveys of students and parents and faculty, and came up with some overall overarching kind of recommendations for next year's scheduling committee comprised probably more of administration to put into effect. So longer blocks was one of their recommendations, not a ton longer, but maybe five to ten minutes longer blocks, and another one was more effective use of the ice, or the, the blocks when students don't have classes, so there are a few recommendations that came out that next year's committee will grapple with and try to create a schedule that encompasses those recommendations, so we'll get you more on that coming up. Let's see, we have some potential funding opportunities. Accelerating math, Department of Ed has some funds available to schools, and we've applied for funds to help us with our already screener and lessons, and hopefully some of our core curriculum for math, if you posted on that. Well, Westfield State University, one of their professors has written a grant for some STEM technology, some lab courses, and she asked us to partner, so we wrote a letter in hopes of joining in on that grant. Our students then will be able to do practice over there on their labs, could be medical labs, it could be teaching labs, they have a, she has a few different thoughts on that. They would be happy to take some interns from us and then could provide PD for educators as well, so we'll see if that comes through. And then a new grant funding opportunity is called Rethinking Grading Grant, and we're just dipping our toes into that, we did a, Marty and I both did a webinar on that this week and last week, and are seeing if it's something that we might be able to apply for a far higher school based on our vision of the graduate competencies, to see if we can get some help working those into the grading process at LHS. I think, this is, I talked about this before, but Ron Jones, he's an advocate, DEI advocate, he's coming April 11th for students, April 11th at night for parents and community members, and April 12th, again, for smaller groups of students, and if you could advertise that, we would be grateful, you should be seeing some signs pretty soon out and about. And then the MCAS dates are below, in case anybody's interested in when they need to be aware that their students are taking the MCAS, so... Does anyone have any questions, Marty?
No, I throw, Challenge Success surveys are scheduled for April 11th through the 14th at the middle school and the high school, so I'm sure those will yield some, some great insights for us, so keep families posted on that.
Does anyone have any questions for Sue?
Bronwyn?
If anyone does, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's Gianna, Bronwyn. Just go ahead.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
All right, thanks, Bronwyn. Sue, so thank you again, I'm loving that you're doing these, and I love that it's, you know, you know, the improvement plan, the goals, the alignment of that. There's a lot, and like you said, and we've talked about this before, but like, the whole year seems like it was COVID when all of this other stuff was still going on, so I love that we get to, I'm on Visual Learn, I've said that before, I love that we get to see this. So, you know, again, thank you for that, but also I just wanted to say thank you for considering a partnership with Westfield State University because we partner, like, my school, Springfield, like, we would not survive without Springfield College, and so I know the value of those college partnerships, so thank you, I, I know you said it's in the works, but I just wanted to, to thank you for at least trying and reaching out to them.
Thank you, Gianna, is there anyone else?
I think that's it.
Looks good here.
Okay, thank you, Sue, appreciate that.
Sure.
There is not a school committee chair report. Dagan is available for a student representative report?
Of course I am, I have so many things to share with you. So, we have a very busy spring coming up at LHS, I do know that the, see what has happened since your last meeting, sophomores took the MCAS, I'm so happy that I'm a junior, I got through that, and it's, never take MCAS again, as great, as great it is, standardized testing is not my personal thing. Again, the Shrek play, the senior class play went absolutely fabulous on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Thank you to their director, Jonah Baresi, he's also the senior class president, Shrek played by Ben Bukovich, and Fiona played by Mary Kay Quinlan, you guys did an awesome job. And also, Long Meadow, our robotics team came first in their tournament, so congratulations to the robotics team, I know they worked super, super hard for many months to get ready for this tournament, and they took the gold, so congratulations to them. Moving forward, we are, yeah, we are in the, we are done with tryouts for all spring sports, congratulations to all who have made a team, track has no cuts, so I'm fine, but lacrosse team's looking great, baseball team's looking great, everyone else, everyone else is looking absolutely fabulous for the, for the spring season, good luck to all those people participating in any spring athletics. Lot of busy spring for class activities, obviously, the graduating class has planning graduation, their senior party, their get-together before graduation, before they leave school permanently. Juniors, in two weeks, we have our delayed sophomore semi in our junior year, and I know the sophomores are running their lock-in next week on...
Friday.
Oh, it's Friday, it's, oh, it's this week! Oh, it's on my class, I guess I'm okay. But they're, they're running all their events, all things are looking well, the freshman class is also really just building off of what they've been doing, I know they want to run another, some kind of basketball tournament or maybe a ping pong tournament, they did something like that in the past, and it went really, really well for them, so they're gonna continue to do something like that for clubs. I don't know much, I do know, coming from Model Congress, that we will be hosting a... So we have a Model Congress event happening, it's going to be an emergency session, so basically when we have Model Congress, say at AIC, when we have our regular conferences, AIC, the Princeton one, a lot of colleges who host us, we have an emergency session, then we go into committees, vote on our own bills that we have created, and then we do the entire congressional process on getting a bill passed. Since Long Meadow, well, since a lot of them, we weren't able to go to them because of COVID, obviously, in the last year, I, I, as the president and my executive board, said, "Well, why can't we hold one at LHS? Why can't we just do it ourselves?" So we had that little idea, we were like, "Oh, we're just gonna run a little emergency session, it's gonna be almost a training for all of our members," and then our advisor, Ms. Pollard, had this bright idea, she said, "What if we invited East Long Meadow?" And we emailed the East Long Meadow advisor, he said, "That's awesome, why don't we invite Agawam?" And then we invited Agawam, and then I'm reaching out to Minichog and their Sabbath team, and it's gonna become this whole big thing, it's really snowballing, and I can't, I can't wait to help run this emergency session, so that's gonna come out of the Model Congress event, that is going to be on April 23rd, so I will let you guys know how that goes. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Dagan, we appreciate your reports, you cover everything every time, so thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Bronwyn?
Or comments, Gianna?
Yeah, I just had a comment.
Sure.
I keep waiting for you to give me the actual go-ahead, so I'm just gonna, I just want, so I'm looking at Dagan, I mean, I'm trying to look here, but I'm looking here because he's right next to me, but I just want to say that every time, like Bronwyn said, every time you do your reports, they're thorough, but it's your enthusiasm. they're thorough, but it's your enthusiasm. It's your excitement. It's for everybody. Like, it's not even just like your class, you know? So I just want to say it's like super appreciated.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Couldn't do this job without all of them. So they make it happen. I just give you guys the information.
Is there anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you, Dagan. We appreciate it. Next up is the LPVEC report from Mary.
Yes, we met on March 16th. It was a short meeting and I'll just give you a very quick update. We received a revenue and expenditure report. We gave travel authorization for a teacher to attend a conference in Chicago with NCSI. It's a state learning convention to improve outcomes for students with disabilities. And we also heard about six students from LPVEC who attended Business Professionals of America State Leadership Conference. So good meeting. Thank you. Oh, our next meeting is on April 12th.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mary. Kevin said there was nothing 3/4 from energy and sustainability. Gianna, anything from SEAL?
Thanks, Bronwyn. So SEAL, Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, continues their great work on advocacy for all students, but especially those students with special education needs. Their next meeting is Wednesday, April 13 at 7:00 p.m. It will be virtual. You can go to sealma.org, S-E-A-L-M-A dot org. And I know that there's some discussion about possibly an in-person meet and greet maybe for this spring. So keep your eyes and ears open for that. But please, again, go to sealma.org, check out the organization, and join us for a meeting if you can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gianna. Jamie, anything for the Tax Sealing Task Force?
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the subcommittee reports. No report from finance sub. No report from policy sub. And curriculum submet prior to this meeting. So who is going to take the curriculum subreport?
I've got to. Curriculum submet this afternoon to continue work on the development of a curriculum task force. As a reminder, the whole committee voted earlier this year to establish a task force comprised of school and community stakeholders to review the educational opportunities of Long Meadow students with a focus on current leveling practices to ensure that future offerings align with the vision of the graduate. So to that end, Dr. O'Shea and Ms. Bertrand have worked together on this task and developed a plan to engage an outside vendor to facilitate this project. And Dr. O'Shea is prepared to tell us a little bit more about that potential opportunity.
Thank you. Yep, well-framed, in line with the direction that we received from the school committee to establish that task force to review the adops offerings with that focus on leveling and ensure that's aligned with our vision for student success. Sue and I had contacted a number of outside partners to assist us with this project. Our thought was that it would be good to bring in an outside set of eyes to guide us, to assist us, to facilitate the conversation. You know, sort of selfishly, I want to be part of the process and really have an opportunity to reflect with colleagues and teachers and students and parents. So the firm that we felt was offering the most betting for the buck was the New England School Development Council, NESDEC. NESDEC is a fairly large firm and they do a number of... They have an array of projects that they work with school districts on. Most notably, they run enrollment projections for school districts. And so we've been... We've partnered with NESDEC on those for many, many years. And so NESDEC had presented us with a scope of services that would allow us to engage a task force in a series of interviews. They have indicated their willingness to review whatever relevant documents we think would be helpful to this study. When the curriculum submet, we talked about the CLEE report. We talked about the vision of the graduate. We talked about our district improvement plan, that kind of thing. And the other thing that came out of the curriculum sub was a request to have us go back to NESDEC and make sure that we were very specifically focused on the question that was before the curriculum sub previously and to focus on the direction that the school committee had provided in this area. So this was the first iteration of their scope of work, their proposal to us. We'll go back to them, make sure that the focus question that we have is the focus question that's included in the scope of work. The thought is that we would reconvene with the curriculum sub next week to get the sort of second iteration of that proposal from NESDEC. So looking forward to getting this out of the gate and activating the study. The thought is that we would... What we asked of all the partners, all the vendors that we contacted was to produce a report for us by the end of October so that it could inform our work going into the 23, 24 school year. So we'll bring back the next iteration of that proposal to the curriculum subcommittee next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? It sounds like it's going to be a great task force. I just have one question for either Nicole or Dr. O'Shea. It seems like it'll be a long process. And NESDEC will be kind of with the task force the whole time?
I think there... I think there would be a flurry of work in this spring where they would do the data gathering through focus groups, through interviews, through review of whatever reports we want to provide them with, whatever data they ask us for. And then I suspect they would continue to work on it over the summer. My hope and expectation would be that they would re-engage us in the fall and that they would complete the report by the end of October. So if that answers your question.
Yeah, definitely. I'm wondering if any of the data from Challenge Success would be helpful to either NESDEC's report or the task force in general?
Yeah, 100%. I'm glad you mentioned that. That was part of our conversation with all the vendors that we spoke with was to... We wanted to gather the Challenge Success survey data, turn it over to the task force and to the... Into NESDEC and have that inform their findings as well. So 100%. And that was part of the reason that we, you know, we were trying to line up the initiation of this study with the release of the Challenge Success survey in early April. So Challenge Success has told us that they can turn that survey around fairly quickly. So it'll be, you know, a matter of days, I believe, that it will take for them to process and compile all the results of that survey.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you to the curriculum subcommittee. EVA sub does not have a report. We do not have any ongoing business, but we do have some new business in terms of a foreign exchange student. Alman Ohio received a request to host a foreign exchange student from Spain. Mr. Landers reviewed the records, references, and host family placement of the student through the AFS, American Field Service Intercultural Program. Dr. O'Shea and Mr. Landers both support the student's acceptance. There's a motion for that?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee accept Mr. Enzo Jones-Sara Sanchez with tuition waived as a foreign exchange student in grade 11 for the 2022-2023 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Bronwyn?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the family for... So this is the second foreign exchange. So it's just super exciting that we continue to see people willing to, you know, bring different, you know, different students from different cultures into our school system. And I just wanted to appreciate the family for that.
Absolutely. Anyone else have any questions, your comments? Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Suzy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. For that motion passes and we look forward to that student joining us. Thank you. There's a motion for an executive session?
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H. And purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No. This motion requires a roll call vote. So just to review, the school committee will be meeting in executive session to conduct strategy in preparation for collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H for the purpose of consideration and release of executive session minutes as well from previous meetings and will not reconvene into open session. So for the vote, Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Suzy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And a yes for me as well. So this school committee is... Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for watching. We'll see you next time.
Good night.
Thank you.